In the usual manner, I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't actually hear that. So as I start then, Dave Hemway, Chair of Select Board.
Marlo Herrick.
Normandy Blake.
And with that, I don't have any particular announcements, so I'll go ahead and turn that over to our employees as I go turn on the rest of the audio system.
I don't have any announcements either, so that works out.
I have this thing I noticed. Somebody's picking up trash and filling little blue bags. So that was nice.
Why, did you tell me about the posters? For the night, I'm sorry dear. No, no.
Oh, that's good.
Now it'll work.
Dave, the announcement we should have is that people are picking up trash and filling little blue bags. Because I saw them somewhere around, right?
Yeah. So, good announcement is that, yes, the trash cleanup is happening. It's normally done specifically on and passed out on Earth Day, but sponsored by Conservation Commission and I think somebody else. But it's the blue bags and they are available to pick up for free right down at the entrance to Town Hall. Also, forgive me, I don't have a date sitting right in front of me. I know that the police department is participating in the DEA program. What's the specific date, though? I know you'll take it.
I don't have it. You can find the website.
Okay. So check the website. The specific dates are there, but they'll take it anytime as well.
Anytime.
All right. Do we have any further announcements?
Not from me.
All right. Any other committee board? Okay, so that moves us into our appointments, which is Department Ahead. So come on down, gentlemen.
We're on the move tonight, kids.
You got someplace to go?
Normally I give the project status stuff, but
I like to delay until next month because some of it will be outdated information and we won't know until the end of the month.
Go ahead, Chief. Why don't you lead us? Well, yeah, get us started.
So, as of March 29th, I have $246,582.2 left in my budget, which is 82.4 percent. So I'm doing right on spot. March 1st to 31st, we had 68 motor vehicle stocks, six summonses, $808 in fines, four arrests, three charges, and one involuntary admissions to the New Hampshire State Hospital. Not willing, let's put it that way. The officers handled 61 calls for service. And as always, I can list off all the calls, and it's actually not too bad that I do list it off because I know it gets a little boring hearing the same calls over and over and over. But it just gives them an idea that this is repeat customers, just over and over and over, doing the same thing, month by month. And we get civil complaints, found property, turned in motor vehicle complaints, two motor vehicle accidents, pistol permits, residential burglar alarms, we had five, road hazards. That's usually, the road hazard, usually the officer finds something on the road and ends up falling out of the road itself. Sex offender registrations, five this month, which was high, but it's repeat customers, not new. Suspicious persons, suspicious vehicles, assist to citizens, assist to the fire and EMS, assist to other agencies, and one sudden death that we handled. Hopefully it doesn't happen anymore. Officer Westgate attended a TASER instructor training, so he's certified to teach. I do have a submission for a police cruiser. We called everywhere looking for a police cruiser. We suspected we'd get one. We found one, and they had to add the backup alarms on it because we couldn't find one. They said nobody will get them until November if you're lucky. Well, I was shocked. We got the only one that was left. We had a white one. They had one, they had two black ones and a white one. We got the only white one that was left. And actually, it's a 22, so we saved 300, 400 bucks over versus waiting for the new one.
21.
Oh, I'm sorry.
21.
It's a 21. It says 22.
Oh.
I think it's typed in.
I saw it said.
You're right. It's a 21, not a 22.
That's what Phil told me today.
Yeah.
And I, not to be...
No, you're right.
That was a good catch, kid.
And we looked at the sheet, the sheet on it, it says it's a 21.
Well, then I always love when they go, "Oh, it's this, it's in 20," and then, "Yeah, it was May," but it's a 21. That's nice. Oh, I would have, yeah.
It was made in 20, but it's a 21, okay.
That happens a lot.
Yeah, because it was made one day different.
Yeah.
Until you go to trade it and you...
That's right. If I remind you to see actual age, then yeah.
Yeah. That's not that way. But it's $34,313.10, which is a few hundred bucks less than what we anticipated. So I will pass that along.
That's not bad news, though. But you could lock, right?
Yes.
You buy a lottery ticket.
You're around.
I'll buy a ticket.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. That's outrageous.
So do we sign?
Are there happy signs?
What will it cost, Chief, to outfit it?
$16,000 change. And most of that is coming from the Detail Fund that we incorporated two years ago, so that every time we do a detail, that money goes into the Detail Fund, so we don't have to pick it out of taxes.
And the backup alarm, that's, they got that in that price?
That's in there.
Okay.
So it's not, it doesn't mean when you go backwards, but it tells you there's somebody behind you, so you don't back into anything.
Well, I don't know that I totally always play that because the other night when I was leaving here, telling the world, I hit the little dog thing, right? I didn't hurt the dog thing, but I put a nice scratch in my doo-bum there. Yeah. So, and it didn't beep at me or anything, and it's right next to it.
That's only a couple thousand.
Oh, I know. Yes. Yeah.
Question about the report. You said that, you know, a lot of these are repeats and that sort of thing. For things like the complaints, roughly what percentage of complaints actually turn into something that's more than just a complaint?
15 to 20 percent. Most of them we can handle either over the phone, or it's a misinformation that they have. They thought maybe they got scammed, but it turns out it wasn't a scam.
Oh, okay. So it's stuff like that as well?
Yeah. We get, we get calls of scams every day. And a lot of it isn't, you know, they'll get a scam on their phone, and it's, you try to explain to them. You just don't respond to it. They want you to respond, and then the scam stops. Just don't answer it, delete it, block the number. And they're all over the place right now. It's just insane.
Yeah. And I have lots of good protections for that that prevent a lot of it from ever getting to me, and the amount that I'm seeing is through the roof compared to normal.
We pick them at the police station on our business line because we don't have caller ID or anything, and so even they don't get the caller ID from us. So they don't know who they're calling, but we get the scams on line. We just kind of string them along.
Roughly how long until the new phone system is set up?
He dropped off the cable wires the other day, so it'll be pretty quick. He's got the phones on order.
Okay.
So it shouldn't take long.
Good.
That'll be good.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for him?
All right. Go ahead, Chief. Well, I did grab that quote from GMI for just paving part of the parking lot at the safety building. And I was on the phone, and I didn't grab my budget sheet, so I'm bad on that. I was on the phone with Tim Allen. I called him to see when he was going to take his posted signs down because we work back and forth different whatever, so he's going to wait another week to see what the rain, because it's at Channel 7, it says sprinkles, and Channel 9 says up to an inch and a half, so.
Do you estimate that the frost broke in most of them?
A lot of them, but like in the, on the Allen Road in like 300 or 400 feet, there's still, and you can find frost in Close Pin Bridge Road. There's a lot of ice still in the ditch. I think the majority of the frost is gone, but if you get over, if you travel the center of the dirt roads, you're fine, but you meet two vehicles and you get over a little bit, she sinks in. So the thing, if we leave the signs up another week and somebody does get hung up, then when it's, if it's over six ton, then it's up to them to tow themselves out and not up to us. So I'm going to leave them up, if that's fine with you folks, and see what the weather brings at the end of the week and...
And you, and you have people that call if you need to work with somebody.
Oh, they do. Yeah, no.
And even including yourself, if there's something that you want to get started on, as me, you know, as like, I would say absolutely, you know?
Yeah, no.
Common sense is what I'm looking for.
Actually, we were at the police station, or the safety building today. We swept the parking lot. We had the equipment out to go down and work on the bridge, to get the bridge all cleaned off and stuff. So we were there and somebody had called Steve, so he came out and gave me a hoot. A couple of folks last week called Dana because they couldn't get ahold of me.
On the Garrish Road.
Yeah, the Garrish Road was today. So they're going to deliver something up there tomorrow and then, yeah, so.
It's good that they're calling ahead of time and asking. That's what we wanted to do, call ahead of time and ask permission, so take time of day.
Yeah.
And then do this.
So the highway stuff's been kind of quiet because the roads have been posted, and I don't do a whole lot. If somebody else can't travel, I don't take advantage of it. So, yeah, we did clean the bridge off down at a close pin bridge, so you can see tar, the whole length of it now. It's not six inches of sand on it from the winter and we're down there quite a bit. And then we did the bridge down at the clubhouse on Deer Meadow Road. Russell has talked to DES and all the folks down there on the Dustin Road property, and we're all set to go.
Okay. You're all set to go?
To do, to do whatevers we need to do down there. So the, the price of gravel is up, so I'd like to get down there and do some testing. It's going to, it's going to be a process. It's not something that's going to happen overnight. We've got to clear some stuff and clear some land and get some stuff crushed. If there's some stuff there to work with, and then if there isn't, then we'll put it up on the, for sale. Well, that's me saying that, and we can do whatever.
You won't save it for us for a long time? Or you mean the land of the property?
The land. Oh, no. If the gravel is there, oh, yeah, we'll keep that forever.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's what I thought. That's what I thought you said.
While we were at the safety building today, Russell, my Russell, and I, we walked up on the south side, no, I mean the north side of the safety building, where we talked about putting the other driveway, and that looks real sensible. You know where the guy was burying the stumps up back there? He had some stuff piled up, but it looked pretty clayey. But I'd asked the other board to go up there and do some test pits, and then we'd know what was there for material, because sometimes you get clay three or four feet down, and then you're into good sand and good bony stuff to crush, and then sometimes you don't find what you're looking for. And I'd like permission to do that. And then that gives us some idea of if there's anything, because if there's material right there to work with, and we can crush the stuff there, it's going to, it's going to save a lot of money on building that driveway in and out there, plus it's a safety building.
Any other questions on that from anybody?
No, I mean, in terms of stuff that you were not talking about a lot of money.
No, no.
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense to do.
I have a question, totally agree with her. But years ago, I thought we like rented a sweeper for the roads. That probably mean before you. I, you know.
No, we, the town...
But I wondered if you were ever planning to do that, because there's an odd, all out of sand on the sides of the road, and then I wondered, if you do that, is there a way to use it for next year?
Not the way, the town does own a sweeper.
Really?
Yeah. Bob Mark. It's
Oh, my God.
30, it's 30 something years old. It goes behind a tractor on a three-point hitch, and you have to, you windrow it, and then you shovel it into the bucket. It's not one of those fancy ones.
Oh, it doesn't pick it up?
That's what we use today. But the last time I swept the roads, and that was quite a few years ago, it, it's dusty, it's nasty, and people don't like it. And
Okay.
Maybe I waited too long into the spring. People had their windows opened up, but, or whatevers, but.
Well, and a lot of times a good rain will help take a lot of damage.
No, they will.
Well, I was asked that too, and I, but I do remember sweeping the roads.
I mean, the town of Warner, the town of Warner, they have a road sweeper. They go out all summer long to do that. And the town of Hoptekin does, but you're talking, what do they got, $3 million budget down at Hoptekin, and I don't know, a couple, a million and a half over to Warner, and, you know, it, it would be nice.
Does that save the road at all or anything? Is there a reason for taking it out, just just?
It, it saves getting into the ditches to haul it back out of the ditches.
Oh, well, that's a good idea, too.
But at the end of the day, at the end of the day, to rent one, or to have somebody come in, it's, it's a coin.
Okay.
I mean, we can always budget for it.
Yeah. Well, I just wondered. I remember years and years ago.
Yeah. No, no, we do have a sweeper. It's eight feet. It turns, but if there's a little bit in the road, it works good, but if there's a lot, like down on, it just, it just goes right up over. It, it, it's, it doesn't quite have a dinosaur on it yet, but it might as well have.
30 years old. Hopefully they get out here when you sweep that with that, or we, will we hire some to do that.
Well, I have talked to Dana, and across the street at the school, they hire Kassat's Concrete's got a sweeper. And they have the contract to do the school. And I put a bug in Dana's ear, and he called Fred Regan, and Fred said, when they come to town to do the school, unless I misunderstood, they got to clean out the parking lot here.
Awesome.
Oh, geez, on my head of myself, though. My God, a sweeper.
Well, I mean, the pavement's beautiful, but just like, we were standing so.
Well, we were going to, we were going to get some of it today.
Yeah.
But the town hall was busy when we came down through here about 8:00, 9:00. I guess it was 9:00. You were coming, I was coming down over the hill. Yeah, it, place was packed. Michelle was busy down there, so.
Oh, first of the month, yeah, right.
We went right to the safety building.
Gotcha.
So, yeah.
So just to circle back, consensus from the board to go ahead with the test pits up at the safety building?
Yes.
Yes.
And the Dustin Road.
Yeah.
Well, you already had that one.
Right, I know, but I just, if I just double check, and then, then I'm not getting myself in a hoop. So, yeah, so in a couple of weeks, when, it'll be another week the roads will be unposted, and we'll be doing some stuff.
That's awesome.
Yeah. Oh, and tomorrow, and Wednesday morning at 8:00, I'm meeting with Chad, the young man from Mitchie Corp. They have the engineering plans all together, but for some reason, he wants to share them with me and see what I think before they send them to the state.
Well, golly.
So I'm going to meet.
Well, that's nice.
Yeah.
That's nice.
Yeah. So I'm going to meet him at the site at 8:00 on Wednesday and take a peek at that, which, I mean, can't imagine it's going to be whatever. So that's.
Well, it's nice to inform you as a road engineer.
Well, Dana's been working with him as well.
Yeah.
And.
What do you, I mean, granted, now that we're kind of getting through springtime a little bit, I mean, granted, we could have the floods of whatever, but what are you, what are you hoping to go in there and, I mean, I mean, I know we have to have approved plans, but I'm sure in your mind, you got, well, if everything goes well, you should be able to maybe be in by...
Oh, that crystal ball I got to shine in every night. So when it starts raining, when it's not digging, and, yeah.
No, I didn't, I didn't know, like, once he gets everything together, do we, do we have to go back to DES again?
Well, it's, it's a process.
I think the thing is, right, once the application is filed, won't that be good? They have, DES will have somewhere in the vicinity of 75 days to respond.
Right, then they have to build the, build the, you know.
And then we would have to order the
Box Culvert.
Box Culvert. And I'm not sure exactly what we're looking at a timeframe, but I would love to say it's coming along.
Yeah, it is. It is. They've been great to work with, and Chad has been
He's been very good.
Great, great young man to work with. So other than highway, I've got a load of coal patch I went down, or sent Russell down a couple of weeks ago to pick up, and we put some out, then it's rain, so now they're drying out. So we got to, we got some coal patching to do on the White Plains Road in Deer Meadow and stuff, but I do have that there at the shop, so we'll be doing that in the next couple of days.
Sounds good. Any other questions or comments?
No, no doubt. All right. Okay. And then on the fire side, a couple, three weeks ago, Salisbury and the Webster people, we did a joint training with ICE Rescue over on Winter Pocket. I wasn't able to attend. We had a Wednesday night, and then a Sunday. Well, that Wednesday night, we had snow and rain, so I was out plowing. And then Sunday, Sunday morning, when they went over, we had that snow. Saturday, in the dirt roads weren't good enough. They were too soft to plow, but Sunday night, Sunday morning, it had froze up over the night, so we were able to. So I didn't make the training with the guys, but they had a great time, and they learned a lot, and they, they got a lot out of it. This Monday night coming, we're going down, Chief Newberry, the deputy chief, he used to be the concrete chief, but he's a deputy chief in Canterbury. They're doing a GPS training that he has, is sponsoring out of Canterbury in Boswood, and he has invited me and three or four other people to attend that, the GPS class. So that will be happening. We had five Wednesdays last month, so last, the last Wednesday of the month, we don't schedule anything. We do maintenance and cleanup and stuff around the safety building and did some housekeeping.
And just a plug while he's on that note, for anybody that has not already done so, if you haven't gotten your fire permits yet, that's when you show up to the fire, fire building to be able to get them.
At 7:00.
Wednesday nights, it's at 7:00 for the meeting.
Yeah, I worked with Phil and Steve and Michelle on the phones. I was involved in that.
Yep.
Can't wait. Just trying to think.
How are the new camera systems and the new computer systems and records?
Oh, great. The, the computers there the other night, actually, they were both being used at the same time, which was great. The new system that we asked for to log the times and stuff in the run sheets is all, all set up. It's in the system, and we've been using that the last couple of, the last couple of calls, the last three calls, actually. We're at 55 calls today. And then we did have
Untimely.
That untimely death, and I worked. Sergeant Sparks, he's a sergeant, right? Okay, I didn't want to do that wrong. Sergeant Sparks was on duty. I think he was here at the meeting, maybe, you guys?
Yeah, he did. And that's, he left here and responded.
Came up, and fantastic. We worked shoulder to shoulder with the family, and great guy I'd worked with, and, yeah, good, good, couldn't ask for better.
Any other questions or comments for him?
Yeah, we have one. It's Flora. She's taking a firefight, a young lady. She just turned 18. She's taken a fire one. And as she's done paperwork, or working on the paperwork, Phil and Michelle on her background check and fingerprint. So when we get all that back, then we'll have another member of the firehouse.
Awesome.
Good.
All right. So just along the reporting of departments, since we don't normally do this and or have the financial people here, I just want to report that overall, for the total operating budget of the town, we currently have 76.29 percent remaining. And while that sounds just about perfectly on target, because it's roughly a quarter of the year, it's actually a little better than that, because it does include several one-time payments for memberships of things that happen at the beginning of the year. So it's actually a little, we're doing really well for the budget so far. And your? All right. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you. Emmett, you might want to stay for the next item.
Now, I just, sorry, Chief. That moves us on to Fire Chief job description.
I thought Dana and I were going to work on that together and then get back to you. I thought that's how I left that together. I want you to just
So that wasn't a problem?
I just want you to see it. Trying to get off my desk somehow.
Well, let's just pass it straight over to, to the chief then. Is there a particular section that you should look at that may have changed?
Yeah, it's the qualifications, Emmett.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I, and he, he put the page, and I gave you the first page. Oh, to make sure that this is, is okay.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I see.
That was, that was, that was my notice indicating that that was the
And that's what we talked about.
We should change.
Yeah, I guess it's really, it's, it's up to these folks. I mean, it's what, they are the boss. I mean, I can say whatever's
Well, we look for your input for sure.
You and I, we're supposed to work on that together, but I guess we're both hard to connect sometimes.
Is there something that bothers you in that?
No, I, no, no, I, it's.
And you wouldn't know best, like, I, I
Same thing that's in here that you have?
You have it, yes.
Okay.
In the sense that, you know, being a fire chief is for as long as you've been.
Yeah, the only thing that I, okay, so that's down here. Yeah, I mean, that's.
I have a typo correction for you. Instead of have know of application, it should be have knowledge applicable on us.
Well, I did put that so that people would read it.
That's right.
But
Where is that, Dave? Is that?
It's the second to last line, second word.
Minimum qualification.
Yeah.
It looked so right at the time.
It's easy to do when you write it.
I just, you know, the people that I'm bringing along now, I mean, you, you take Jake, I mean, he's not an EMT, which it says to be an EMT here to be a chief, but Ben.
Well, I, I read it as must be certified
As one of the
By category 2, EMT, ICS, or
Right.
It's not saying all of them. It's saying you need at least one of them.
All right.
So, which, to me, it's
Because I think we talked about that, too.
That's from a different track.
That's right.
Right, right, right.
A good, good, good question. Yeah. Because you wouldn't, yeah, you wouldn't want to limit.
You know, obviously more et cetera, but, yeah.
Yeah. So if you do not have further concerns of it, I'd be fine with it.
No, I, um.
Plus, then if something does come along
Yeah.
You can, you can waive, if there's something that you think that isn't going to fit.
Or you folks would, I would, yeah.
Is it maybe waived if the chief is working toward?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, working towards, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's, that's what I asked. That's what we talked about the last time, about adding that to that. So somebody would have some time to
Get what they needed.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I mean, you've got to have the right people in the right place at the right time.
Yeah, it's in that life.
Do we need a motion? Do we need to sign? Do we need a motion? Do we need to sign it? What are we supposed to do to?
I don't think so. I think. Or maybe.
Because we had the last one and that technically, I guess, wasn't adopted.
Well, it wasn't adopted, so I think it's best if you do take a motion to adopt it. And this is something, this is, I have more projects going than I know of, but the job descriptions really do need to be worked on. We have several. But I think if you were to make a motion to accept it, and that way there's no question that, that's the job description.
Okay.
For the next, for the, the, the next chief in place will follow all this.
Right, right, exactly.
Well, I don't think there's anything in there that you're not following.
Right.
So, yeah. All right. I would move that we accept the job summary for, sorry, the fire chief job description and summary as presented with the amendment of the typo correction.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much for your input and for making sure that that would be the most appropriate for it.
Sure.
Absolutely.
All right. That moves us along to our other old business, the project status updates.
Do you want to go first or shall I?
I could go first with the fridge.
Okay.
So, I, we discussed the fridge last year.
Which fridge? A fridge?
A fridge.
Fridge, oh, sorry. I got fridge on my mind.
We didn't want.
It's not a fridge, it's fridge. Because the church bought the stoves with the, with the agreement that the town office would buy the new fridge. So, I've gone off, looked for quotes, kind of went through, maybe doing a commercial fridge versus a residential. But currently, the prices for commercial fridges, even used ones, is over two grand. And then after discussing it with Karen today, they wouldn't want it anyway, because it wouldn't have a freezer unit. Because if you get a commercial fridge, it's either just a fridge or it's just a freezer. So, we've kind of gone back and forth and found some good ones. And we've come to a price of about one thousand ninety-nine dollars for the fridge that they would really like. And I'm just hoping the board would give me an approval to spend up to a certain amount, so I can select the fridge and then order it.
So, is that the amount that you think is?
Well, I think we might want to put a little extra in there in case there's any installation or.
Or delivery tryouts thing, yeah.
So, so you're talking about now like a regular big.
Just a residential, a twenty-one.
With a big freezer in it too, right?
Yeah, with a big freezer. And then we're going to put that one right next to the current fridge. And hopefully, we get a little bit more life out of the one we have, though it is relatively old. But if it does tick up, we'd still have the other one.
So, you're feeling that we need two?
Well, we already have.
Oh, okay.
The one that's down there that they've been using for like ever.
I thought they originally wanted to replace it, but they said, why not keep it until it doesn't work anymore? Because it's still works fine right now.
Right, and then because you have storage.
But they need more space to do their events. They just are constantly running out of space. Not everything fits there.
Sure.
Okay. I assume we need a motion for that?
I would do a motion and I think what you're saying, a little extra.
Yeah, I mean, one thousand two hundred and if I need more.
I was thinking twelve hundred, yeah.
Yeah, so I can have delivery.
I was thinking eleven hundred, you'd have an extra dollar.
Oh, wow.
But we didn't ask you.
That's so often the case.
Are you expect, it's, it's a fridge, so there really shouldn't be much in the way of install other than just bringing it in and plugging it in unless, is this expected to have, for example, like ice making and stuff that would need to be hooked up? No, okay.
Because we don't have auto hookups back there anyway.
Yeah, so if it's not, that means that install should be.
Plugging it in.
Basically plugging it in. So, it's just going to be delivery. Because if it were going to be installed, then I'd say we need more than that. But, all right, I would move that we allow Russ to order the fridge, spending up to twelve hundred dollars to honor our agreement with the church.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Check that baby off.
It's been a long time coming.
I know.
I wanted to wait for the new budget to get emerged.
We're working on projects that have been outstanding, so we're trying to.
We've been doing that for a couple of years.
Yeah, but we're getting there. The door replacement for the office door, the main door to the office. If you remember, we got a quote, it was eight thousand. And that was for the office door and also for a new door between the cafeteria and the office hallway with, using the fob system. I have not had very good luck of getting anyone interested to give us a quote. And so, I guess I'm looking for, where should we go? Should I change the scope, just have the door quoted?
Remind me what this specific quote, what, what were you requesting when you asked?
And what does the fob part do?
Well, ever since I've been here, I was told that the, the town wanted to have a fob system so that instead of a key, it would keep track of who was coming and going.
But do we, do we get, do we have cameras?
We don't.
No, we don't?
No.
But they have those like, yeah, it just seems like that's a lot of money for a door. I, I.
Well, it's the two doors plus the install. I agree.
I mean, I.
So, so this is actually the doors, the installation of the doors plus the fob system and the install of that? Or is, so this is covering everything?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Those separate.
Because I, I thought at least one of the.
Well, that's, that's including, I mean, the fob is included with the electronic security system as well. But it's eight thousand for all.
Including the doors?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Maybe we need to change the scope.
What do they, what kind of door are they quoting? A steel door, I'm assuming?
Steel door, yeah.
And they, and the, and they have to have a whole new frame and everything?
I suspect so. As you know, one of the biggest problems with the doors, we can't lock it from the inside.
The other thing that you might want to consider, and this will be a question for the whole board. Obviously, those are, you know, let's do it the cheapest with only doing two doors. But if we're going to be moving towards a fob system, you generally get better pricing per door, per whatever, for anything in the industry. And you might want to consider, for example, this door here. So, when we allow access to people for rental of the hall, for example, and/or if the library wants to join in and do something similar for the library, they can decide whether they want to be in on that as well or not. So, we might be able to get some economies of scale by doing what we probably would want to do after that anyway. I know that there had been at least some concern and some mention from people, both employees and not, that we should also do that, do the fob system for at least the vault room, if not the offices and stuff. So, I would suggest looking, and this is me, the rest of the board can chime in, whether they agree or not. But I would suggest looking at, even though the total bill would be higher, that might make it much more palatable, since we would be getting a lot more for probably not a whole lot more cost. What does the rest of the board think?
So, we're talking about just like that door? We're not talking that door and the one in the front?
Now, that one, that one is just.
That we don't get a break.
And the front one here is an interesting set, but as long as there's a fob door getting in here, people don't, like, we don't have to have a fob over there, because people can open it from here.
Yeah.
There might be a change to the locking mechanism, so that they don't need a key to unlock it from inside or something of that nature that might need a locksmith, but I don't think we necessarily need to fob that. But if this one is fobbed, then there's access to the hall via fob for, like, okay, you're renting the hall, here you go. We don't have to worry about copies of keys or any of that sort of stuff.
Lot of front, but now, you're talking about all the office doors downstairs? That seems, that's excessive.
Some people have mentioned that, but the, the one that, the one that everybody that I've talked to has added concern for is the vault itself.
I understand that. I, I wouldn't, to me, I don't think you need them for all those rooms. But the vault room, I could understand that.
Is there, when you, when you kind of get back to them, is there a way to break down what the fob part costs and what the door cost is?
Sure.
You know, so as, as I'm trying to figure this out in my mind, to give my, you know, opinion, I'd like to know what the difference is. Because we all love technology, but sometimes in a situation, if it outweighs your budget.
Never mind fobs.
You know, I, I can understand, you know, replacing the door, the fact that, so we can lock it on both, both sides, that, that makes sense. But yeah, I'd like to know what the difference is.
Okay. Yeah, and, and that will.
And then like you're saying, you know, even if you could say, okay, if I buy this many, you know, yeah, if they could break that down, that would be awesome.
Yeah, because some of that's going to, and the breakdown will help this too, because some of that's going to be, this is the cost of getting and setting up and installing a system, and then this is the amount you're adding for a door. You know, so.
Yeah, right.
Hopefully.
Okay, so we're changing the scope of the project a little bit then? Is that what we're saying?
I personally would like to know what both cost before, you know what I mean?
Both being the fob and.
With or without the fob, you know what I mean?
Okay, how about the additional doors?
I think the, the.
Depends on the fob.
I don't think every door needs a full replacement to get a fob.
No, I don't think so either, but, but all, I haven't done, I haven't had this door quoted, so you wanted to add that door. So, we're talking, are we talking three doors? The office front door and the door between the cafeteria and the hallway, and then we're talking the ball?
So, now it would be a total of four. And maybe that would help get more people interested, so we can actually get more competitive bids.
Okay. But maybe I can break it, have them break it down into different, different.
Yeah.
Schematics.
Yeah, well, I mean, it should be that, they should know at each door installation.
Yeah, I just want to get straight what I'm asking.
Yeah, that's, that's what I want to know. Then we can decide, okay, that one can have a fob if, if, you know, it's not. So, we know what we're spending our money on.
Sure, okay.
Absolutely.
And not getting overzealous, I would say.
Well, that gets us, gets me out of the, away from the dark. Thank you.
Uh, any other project status items?
Can you think of other projects that haven't, that need to be brought on home as far as?
Well, it says it's set up, so I figured.
I don't, I'm not aware of any, but I'll come up with some.
All right. Any other, and any other comments from, from the public that are here specifically on similar sorts of projects? Yes?
I just wanted to ask a question about the fobs. Would your fob open all the doors?
That's programmable, so that would be a policy sort of decision. Any, any fob can, any key fob can be programmed to open any specific door at any time or all times. It can also be denied that.
And then as somebody leaves, because we use a fob at work, if somebody leaves, they just kill that particular number or whatever it is for that.
Yeah, the fob would be disabled until the returned or replaced.
Right. Well, I, I do have to say, in my opinion, I'm with you, Marlo. This is a lot of money and, you know, we're scraping the bottom of barrel now for, you know, keep our belts tightened. And I can, I can understand, especially that door downstairs, it's crazy. They can't lock her from the inside. But, you know, I, I would say that the fewer, the better. You know, if, the fewer doors with fobs, because it's, it's crazy. And I'll just put my two cents in about the meeting house. They got nailed on those two doors that they had in the front. They paid eight thousand dollars for those doors, because they were mahogany. And the first set of doors, they, they cracked and broke. They had to replace them again. And this pair of doors is all cracked and broken, so. But those were wooden doors and these are going to be steel doors.
Yep. All right. Any other comments or suggestions for projects that we should look at? All right.
I like it when people are satisfied.
I have a real quick.
Yes.
The handicap sign over there on the inside. We need one.
Oh, for.
I was going to say.
It was over here going towards the library and it might still be out.
Yeah, there's one there with a, with a mirror over.
We need one there for the, for the ramp people.
And that is all part of stuff that's been gone through with ADA and as we bring.
Yeah, I think we got signs, but we won't get the right ones. We have to.
Yeah, we're.
We have to get new ones, because they send us the wrong ones.
So, we have some signs, but we, we need more. We're working on.
Or the right ones.
Thank you.
I've been naked for years. Thank you.
All right. Any other that you guys want to ask about, or else I should say? All right. That moves us on to new business, Department of Labor Inspection.
We had a representative, an inspector from the Department of Labor, who chose us to look at our buildings. And she was here last Tuesday, I think, looking at this building and the public safety building. They do this periodically, but they, we had not been inspected by the Department of Labor for many, many years. They only have two inspectors for the whole state, so you can see why.
I'm like, look at her, look how lucky we were.
So, we were lucky.
Yeah.
I think it went fairly well. She is going to send a report, which could take anywhere from thirty to forty-five days. You know, she did have a few suggestions to me of what we should do. She was concerned about the camera and the cords on the floor. So, we're going to have to figure out something to do about that. Other than that, I thought it went very well and I thought she was very nice and very helpful.
See when we get the report.
We know, when we get, when we get the report, it's not as nice as that, I don't know.
That actually reminds me of one of the other projects, was dealing with the camera. IT was going to be looking at.
They did? That's the next thing on the agenda. I think that's.
Oh, see, there we go. Why do you think we let it all in each other in an appropriate way? It's almost like I planned. All right, so anybody else have questions or comments on this part? All right, so, Grandchild Camera.
So, we had Computech come in to look at the equipment, see if we could utilize the equipment that had been abandoned in the town hall. Unfortunately, we couldn't use all of it. That's what he determined. We tried the camera that's currently in the ceiling. It was not compatible with our little piece right here. The microphone, on the other hand, did work. So, I sent Zach to say, could he quote us what it would be for a new camera to put in the ceiling that is compatible with the one we currently have? And he has not gotten a quote yet. I called them today. They said they're still working on it. But they expect me to have it hopefully by the next meeting.
Perfect.
But that's where we stand with that.
All right. Any questions?
Yep.
Okay, so that moves us on to building inspector, annual reappointment.
So.
Go ahead.
Oh, that's, last year, we appointed Tom Bay to be the building inspector per the assembly orders, so that all the building permits would not have to come to select board meetings. I was wondering if the board would like to do that again.
That is an annual thing, correct?
Yes, it has to be done yearly. That's how it's written in the zoning ordinance.
I would move that we continue to, and reappoint our existing building inspector as the current building inspector.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let me get the sign out of it. That moves us on to the last of the listed new business, approval of tax exemptions and credits.
So, I just have a whole bunch of new ones that came in since the last time you signed. A lot of people coming at the last minute. So, I reviewed documents already for these ones. And we have several, I think most of them are veterans exemptions, one new solar exemption, and another current use application.
Do these have to be, once it's done, it's done, or do we have to do it every year?
Once it's done, it's done for.
Okay.
So, it's, it should be pretty.
So, these are just additions to what we already have?
The only time you would have to see it again is if, say, the DRA audited us and the paperwork wasn't in the right spot. And we couldn't find it. And you'd have to contact the person, have to fill out the paperwork again, and then have you suck it in. And, yeah.
You're under control.
If the property gets sold.
Yeah.
Well, probably sold, removed, but it doesn't go back to the board. I just take it off. So, those are the ones.
Yeah, so for example, if there's a solar exemption, you're sold.
Would not get the solar exemption. Would not get the solar exemption after re.
Oh, really?
Right.
So do we, do we have to sign these at all or hang them?
Yes. I can show you where to sign on. This one's the current use.
Second page, huh?
Wherever it says assessing officials.
Well, there's. That one?
Yeah.
That's gotta be there.
Signature can go to the right side.
Oh, we gotta sign, oh, right, oh geez.
Yeah.
I am not as good as Dana.
We don't need a motion, I mean, it's just a sign.
We're giving our motion by our signature.
I wanna look at the current use application, that's all here, that's for somebody to put the property in a conservation easement. And so now they're putting in current use. They can do that.
So anything that's already put into current use?
Correct.
So it doesn't.
I didn't know that either myself.
Is it like wetlands where a size is not required?
Right, for example, it's like a wetland. You can put any size of wetland in, if you sign a conservation easement, you can also put the conservation easement in, this is something I, I didn't know, so I talked to our assessors about it. And he said, yes, you can, you can fill out this form and then show the conservation easement deal and put it in the application.
I'm gonna pass these along and I will sign them again later in the evening. So that moves us out of new business and, actually, let me, let me see that one, the current use, I don't know, they're gonna be signing here. There you go, sir. Okay. That's okay, I'll, I'll do it.
We'll deal with it later, huh?
There you go. Um, so that moves us on to correspondence.
And we do not have any correspondence.
Fastest correspondence ever.
Sorry, but people aren't wanting to talk about it.
All right. So that will move us on to public comment, which we've, we've taken some of, but, yes, please.
I have a question.
Yes.
I have a question for the chief Adams. So, I have to re-trust him, like.
Yeah, just make sure we come out here.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
I have a question about the Apple AirTags. Have you had or has Webster had, or even the county, any exposure to them and bad ramifications with them?
Nope, not that I'm aware of.
And human trafficking?
Nope, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
So, so I actually know quite a bit about them, so if you have questions, I will be happy to answer them.
I figured you would be aware. No, I figured you would, I.
I couldn't even hear the question.
So, so the question was about whether we've seen any, whether our police have seen any issues with Apple AirTags. And, uh, there are several similar technologies from a couple other companies such as Tile and so on. Uh, to briefly explain it, an AirTag is about this size, kind of like an old silver dollar, uh, and maybe about this thick. Uh, and it can be put on or in anything to alert you to if something is missing or, you know, the like. Uh, the concept was like you would put it in your purse or attach it to your keys, so.
Or put it on your dog's collar.
Yeah, so if you couldn't remember where something was, or you misplaced it, et cetera, you could look at your phone and it would tell you where it is. Great, they work great for that, most of the companies all work really well for that. The Apple AirTags have a slight unique twist to this, in that they work better than a lot of the others. Um, because they will, through anonymous ways, if somebody else's phone picks up my AirTag, which I don't have, but if someone else's phone picks up my AirTag, their phone will communicate back through the cloud to get back to me saying, your AirTag is someplace else, it's right here. So even if I'm not within range of it, I can track it. This is really good, really helpful for its intended use. However, uh, as with any technology, it is as good or bad as people decide to make use of it. Uh, and so some people have been doing things like tracking cars that they want to steal, or sticking it in the backpack of somebody that they want to go abduct. Uh, and so these sorts of things have been problems. Uh, and, well, I can't speak for all of the different brands. Apple does have on all of their own devices, uh, it's built in, so if an AirTag that is not yours is moving along with you, it will alert you to it.
Well, Apple.
And if you have an Android device, there, Apple has an app available on the Android Store that will do the same thing for you.
But I thought the Android wouldn't tell you that there was a tag following you.
The Android itself will not, but Apple has an application available on the Google Play Store that you can download and put on your Android, and then it will do that.
All right, okay.
So, please go, go look for those if that's something that is concerning to you. The, the Apple devices will do it automatically. Your Android, if you have that, uh, go download the application and it will alert you if, if one is following you that is not yours.
But they still only have like a seventy-eight percent, um, reliability or accuracy level? So, for instance, um, my phone might pick up your tag, don't know. My phone might pick up a tag that's like on my car or on a.
Absolutely.
Roof outside my house? But I don't know where it is, it might take days to figure, and I'm just using me because me, but it could take days or god knows how long to figure out where that tag actually is. Because there's no sensor to tell you exactly where it is. And by the time you find it, it could be too late.
So there actually is, um, the way that they are using the Bluetooth and everything else.
But.
It, it will actually hone you in specifically to it within a, out of it.
But even if you're not like, like, for instance, I don't have them, I don't ever wanna have any experience with them. Would my phone actually be able to tell, tell me, or would it only be the phone of the actual owner of that tag that would hone in onto it?
So the way they originally came out, it was only the owner of the, the AirTag device. Uh, the way that it is turned into is if you, you've got one following you, you can put it into like, I'm recording this mode. And A, your phone can, can pinpoint it, and B, you can make it beep.
Sometimes. Sometimes, maybe, there are police reports.
You can, so you can always tell it to beep. Some, specifically in, say, New York and a couple of spots in California, uh, some of the organized gangs have actually removed and pulled them apart and removed the ability for them to beep, uh, but you can always pinpoint it.
And they're hiding them like behind license plates.
Oh, sure.
Because they're the size of, what, what is that, a thirty, twenty-two battery?
Yeah, it's, it's about the size of an old silver dollar and about twice as thick.
So it just, it comforts me to know that you're aware of them.
Yes.
Because there are a lot of complaints that Apple is kinda trying not to address right now, where they've called the police, police say, well, it's not really a life threatening thing, it's really not a dangerous thing. Uh, we can't hear it beeping, so it's probably really not here, blah, 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 blah. Fortunately, we live in a small place that, um, if somebody called you concerned about it, you would respond to it. We would do it.
Absolutely.
I knew you would.
And, and, and I expect that they've actually had some, some training or some, some other resources that will help them with that. Certainly alerts towards all of the police officers about it. Uh, but if you ever have any questions on something specific, just let me know, I'm, I'm happy to, to talk about any of it.
But so far, we're spared, it's not.
Oh, we've been good.
Yeah, and don't ask me. Because I haven't got a clue. I'm like, what?
Yeah, you're right, if someone would just follow you home, right?
That's right. And knowing me, I'd say, come on in. Yeah, that's interesting.
All right. Do we have any other further public comment or questions?
You know I do.
Yes.
First thing I wanna do is thank you all, all of you at the table, for putting in the percentage change line in the town report. I can't tell you how much I appreciate it.
Thank you, but I, I don't wanna take any credit for it, we, we had our, our crack team of, uh, publishers over here take care of that for you.
I appreciate it.
I thought it was a good idea and, and it came out well, so.
No, I, I really appreciate it. Now, I have some, I have a couple of, um, good ideas. Um, one, one was in the Vogue Times, which is a little free newspaper. I'll give one to you and one to you because it concerns the fire and police department. It's, it was an ad that, it's purchased with a grapevine, that, um, it asks people to put their numbers on both sides of their mailboxes, if they don't have a mailbox on a post on something. Because I'm delivering packages and things and there's so many mailboxes, not, not necessarily Webster, but, you know, they, they need to put, they don't need their name, just put their numbers on the mailbox, it's just a good idea.
We went through that before, a couple, a couple of years ago.
The nine-one-one thing, and the county gave everybody numbers, but how many, how many houses have been sold since then?
Yeah.
So, so you can keep this, the, just for, just for the, uh, information. Now, I found this online, there was a house that was for sale and I made copies of all the ads I looked at. There was a house for sale down the road from me, so I looked online just out of curiosity, and it got down to schools. And there were several different real estate companies and I, I copied those. And it gave the ratings of our schools and I didn't like what they said. Now, Caldwell Banker has the house for sale and their rating was three, I think it was three out of five, but, no, it must've been three out of ten. Three out of ten for the elementary, no, I'm sorry, five out of ten for elementary, middle school was three, and the high school was six. And, and it's, it's in there, so you can see it. But the others all gave us one out of five stars for all the schools. And Dea, I, you're the perfect one to see this.
I don't know where they get their figures and all that, I have no idea where they come from, out west somewhere, I don't know. But it's, it's a lot of malarky, is what it is, to tell you the truth.
It is.
We have a really good school system, I fought for it for many years, we've got a great school system. And, and where they get these, you know, anybody, I used to do market research, a long time ago. Anybody can change things the way they, in this coun, in this, and now it's worse than ever.
Yeah.
So they just pick up stuff out of the blue.
But I just wanted to ask me where.
I'm glad.
But it's interesting, because what, why wouldn't a real estate agent wanna give it the best rating they can?
So all of.
To sell the house.
All, all of these are.
No, that's what I mean.
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
I can't figure it out.
That doesn't make any sense to me.
But they did say that Simon's Elementary and that Salisbury Elementary were, was a three. And Webster was a one.
Yeah, so this one here.
I just wanted to bring it to your attention, I don't, didn't want any action, I just wanted you to, to know what's on there.
Yeah, one of these is saying, you know, six for Webster Elementary School, three for the middle school, five for the high school. And those are the ones that I'm used to seeing. Um, and right on the bottom of the page, it says disclaimer, school rating is provided by great schools and is one to ten, um, and.
Who knows what great schools is?
That's one that I'm used to seeing, that many of them normally use. Uh, it's a big conglomerate, they do it based on aggregates of test scores and percentages of funding and percentages of pupils to, to, how many people are in the school versus have left the school that could be in it, like a whole number of things. Uh, the other ones that are listing as.
An actual study, in a sense, yeah.
The others that are listing as ones, I have no idea where they're getting it and they don't list it. Uh, but those all appear to be from one particular realtor, so you might wanna contact them and just ask.
I used to, I even, I took a picture of it because I was trying to print it, but there were, there were three or four different realtors that had that on there. And I just, I thought it should just be brought to your attention, that's all.
And, and it is funny, because some, some states and counties run the school districts, not like, you know, or some, or like Concord is their own district, where we have five. They don't get the, people don't get the concept at all. And so anything can be after market research, any stats can be manipulated any way they want to. So, but we have a good school system, I still say.
Oh, yeah.
I have great school, a lot of kids going to college, you know, more kids than, than ever, so, um, and doing good things.
Yeah, because that, that was just an FYI for.
Yeah, thank you.
For all of you.
Just makes me mad.
Uh, made, made me mad, that's why I copied it out. Um, you were talking earlier about the Knights Meadow Bridge, do we have a ballpark, what it might cost yet? Or we're, or we're not that far yet?
New White Plains Bridge, you mean, not Knights Meadow?
Well, same thing.
What?
It's Knights Meadow.
Right now, we have our ballpark for the engineering to get it through, uh, EDS. Uh, after that is done, then we will be getting ballparks for the, uh, cover itself and then the install.
Okay, yeah, because I wasn't sure how far we were on that.
Unfortunately, we had to basically start from scratch.
Yeah, I know.
But we're pretty quickly moving along that path, so it's progressing really well now. The way it probably should have originally.
We're not sleeping anymore. I, I, I had read in your minutes that, um, for the property, for the salt shed, I know there's this problem with it, I don't, I thought we needed to buy some extra property or something, but I read it in the minutes that you're gonna have Lieutenant Mitchell go and ask and of the landowner if they would sell more property. How come a selectman wasn't chosen to go?
Because that would, if I could.
Pete Knowsman.
What was that?
Pete Knowsman is friendly with him, so.
Oh, he does?
It'd be easier for Phil to go over and talk to him.
Oh, okay.
So Phil and I are gonna both go over and.
Okay, because I, I just wasn't sure what the protocol was or anything. Let's see, what else was on?
Yeah, we, we normally, so the normal procedure would, would likely be to, uh, send a letter and invite them to talk with the, the select board and/or a select person and Dana and whoever's involved. But because of the existing, uh, relationship, that was not done here.
Well, that works. It helps to have an in.
Absolutely. Hopefully, we don't need to use it, uh, but before we keep going, and, and in case, it sounds like you have more. Uh, but I believe the chief had, um, somebody to respond to on numbers.
I do. Um, numbers on the mailboxes are great for mail, for mail carriers, but when you have a cluster of mailboxes and, um, your mailbox is on this side of the road and there's driveway here and a driveway here, it doesn't, the mailboxes aren't great, um, numbered. Um, we do have.
I, I just wanted to say, we just had a problem with Jay and Greg Mock's mailboxes. And I suggested, because it was, a package was misdelivered, she got one for Greg, because of two boxes, exactly for what you're saying. I told her, put an arrow under the number, so that they know where the house is, you know, uh, this one's on this side of the road, this one's on this side of the road.
Well, I get, I get the police chief's mail, uh, well, in, he gets my mail. But, so anyways, we are working on that, um, we are, but they're not going on mailboxes. So if you live on the left-hand side of the road and your mailbox is on the right-hand side of the road, um, you're gonna have a number in front of your house and it's gonna be both ways, so if you're going to Kentucky, you can see the number, and if Kentucky or Warner's coming in from that end, they can see the number in. Um, actually, the association has been working on that and getting cost. Um, because some of them are, um, four-digit numbers, so they're gonna be more than that with the millennia poll. And, um, and they will be read, read with white letters, like, um, Kevin Coupon down here has. Um, Tim Allen has one down on his mailbox at the Warner Town Line and, um, and then, um, they'll, and that's what we're gonna do, um, try to promote that with just what it costs. And we'll go out, the firehouse will go out on Wednesday night and, um, and install them for the people if they, um, when we get that all together and, um, we have been. And we have been working on that.
Cause, cause just from the post office, we've got forms because it's a requirement by the post office to have your number. Not necessarily your name, but your number. And we've been trying to give them out and forcing people. Because, and then I, I did leave a little note for Dee that if, if people that have P.O. boxes, they don't have a mailbox, they've got to put a number somewhere.
Yeah, that's, we're, we're, the, the association's working on getting the cost and all that. We're gonna put stuff up and do the Facebook thing and do some stuff here with Dana and work with Michelle to try to, to promote that. And then, but that is in the workings because seconds turn into minutes and sometimes you don't have, it's, you don't have that. Well, what's the old saying?
So, so I really like that idea and I'm glad that the fire departments as a whole are the ones that are working on it. Cause that, that'll give it uniformity, which will make it easier for all of our emergency responders, regardless of town, to respond to, cause everybody responds everywhere. Your comment, maybe I misunderstood you, but were you saying that the post office would give out numbers for free?
I carry a magic marker with me. They're not gonna be able to see the magic marker at night. Cause when I was on my mail route, there was not one box that didn't have the numbers. And, but I, I just kindly asked the people, I said, and I put it just the way I said, "How is an ambulance or a fireman gonna find your house if you have no number on your box?" "Oh, I just got a new box." I said, "I understand that, we're not asking for your name." They need to be able to find you and find you at night. So, you know, the post office, they, they require it, but we have forms telling them that they have to put the numbers on there.
Okay, so it's a requirement form, not a, not a request number?
And if, and if we can push to work along with the fire department, you know, like I said, I saw that ad in the Vogue Times and I just thought, wow. You know, we need to do this too. Because so many new people moved in, they get a new mailbox. Now, Luanne is, she, she's pretty amazing. She has done decorations on all these mailboxes and they have names and numbers on them and on both sides. But, but other routes, you know, they, they won't do that. Concord is pretty bad, very, very bad on the outskirts. But Webster's not too bad unless you get a new person or, you know, a new mailbox.
So let's consider this a public service announcement that if you have a mailbox, you need your number on it and it really should be on both sides and probably the door, especially if it's a cluster of them. So-
And the house.
That's good.
Or, or a tree, just something that they can see.
And probably.
Either that, just pour a little more gas on it, it'll be a little bit brighter.
Now, I do have one more question.
Yes.
And it's your fault.
Oh.
What's that camera for? The one in the ceiling?
The one in the ceiling?
Yeah.
That was the original camera from Town Hall Streams.
Oh, whatever that was.
So that was what Nancy, Chris and Bianca had put in place to originally do the streaming-
Oh, okay.
Of all the meetings.
Okay.
And after review of it, we were paying a significant amount monthly to do that. Whereas after about a year's worth of use of our system, we've done a lot more without having to pay them more for it. And we already paid back the amount that we've spent on the system.
Good, okay.
Now, one other question talking about cameras, cause we have them at the safety building now. They always had them on the police side, but now we have them in the base. Do they, does there have to be a, a sign or something in the door or something? I mean, the, the, the building isn't open to public, but maybe that would be something just so I don't get in trouble or we get in trouble here that, about cameras and how that all works.
So-
Smiles here on camera?
For here and specifically for the way that we do this with meetings. The cameras are not running, not streaming, not recording except during the public meetings. So we don't have to notice anything because every meeting is subject to it. For buildings, I'm, I'm pretty sure there's different laws based on whether it's a residence, a public entity or, you know, a, a commercial business. So I'm just gonna defer to Steve on that, ask him.
I was, I was, we have to have Mark that says you are being audio and visually recorded.
But we don't, we don't record the audio, just the-
We'll come up with a, we'll come up with a notice for cameras.
Alright.
But ours, we have to have it marked.
No, no, I just, we have, I just don't wanna get anybody in a rathup and I don't wanna end up-
So I'll just ask the question. I, I know that many residences around here have cameras and many of them advertise that they have cameras. Are residences required to advertise that they have cameras? No? Okay, but just making sure so everybody knows.
That's a good question. So if we put a camera up, we don't have to tell anybody?
Alright, do we have any further public commenter questions? Do we have any other commenter questions from board or employees? Alright, that moves us on to motions and appeals. So we have our draft meetings from a couple different- We're doing here. Well, there's one date of one and a non-public.
Yeah, no, there's a work session too. It's kinda getting a little dated because I forgot about it.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, there were also minutes from the twenty-eighth of February.
Yeah.
So that was the, the twenty-eighth of February work session on policy stuff. While we review that, where are we with the policy stuff? I know we reaffirmed and adjusted several of them. How, roughly how many do we have left that we should be looking at? I know your summit went on.
There are, there are a few that are waiting for things from the treasurer. And I need to talk with you at some point next time we do it with some of the suggestions. But the policies themselves, I think we're, don't have very many left. Probably about five, I guess.
Good, alright.
So you think we got a good dent in them?
And just as an update on that, we have the, the large policy that you've got the, the committee looking at. How is that going?
I am so excited to tell you this, I'm glad you asked me. Tomorrow's our first meeting, tomorrow afternoon on the Personnel Committee. Well, it's been, town meeting is not a good time to try to meet. And also just getting scheduled, so we are meeting tomorrow afternoon to start on it.
Alright.
Actually Dana isn't.
What's that?
We got a notice from him saying that he could not be there and it's gonna be changed till the seventh.
A who, from one of our members?
Yeah, I believe it is. That's the Joint Loss Committee, right?
Oh no, that was, that's a different committee.
Okay.
Yes.
This is the, uh, the latest policy review.
Yeah, we were supposed to meet today, Joint Loss, but it's really the eleventh he wants to meet.
Oh, mine says the seventh, so we can change it again.
But thank you, I need someone to watch over me every minute.
So did anybody, did everybody get a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes, no, we have some.
And did anybody have any thing that they wanted to discuss or change in this minutes? Alright, and I would move that we accept the seven minutes as written.
Some of the second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. And that moves us along to trustees of trust funds.
We have, we also have, I have two motions. I have the trustees of trust funds. And then I have motions for the withdrawal of impact fees, which is not on your schedule.
Okay. That's a sensible place to put it. Alright. Oh, I'm excited. Oh, you've already got the, yeah. There, I'll give you that to make sure the numbers match correctly as they should. I would move to request trustees of trust funds to issue a check in the amount of $2,020.57 to pay invoice number P2-10042222, payable to Bosco and Sam and Gravely for aggregate to beat the mud on roads. These funds to come from the Road Preservation Expendable Trust Fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I would move to request trustees of trust funds to issue a check in the amount of $3,833.57 for invoice number 369155-34 to VHP Engineers for Engineering Services for Closed Pin Bridge. These funds to come from the Bridge and Culver Capital Reserve Fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I was with you, sir.
Final note, because I gave you the sheeted triple check. Or triple check, I should say. And just while we're in the process of that, please make note that our next select board meeting, we will have the VHP engineers here to discuss the timing and what is going on with Closed Pin Bridge. So if you have any questions about it, as much as I would like to say that I can help you with that or Dana and company could help you with that, that will be the meeting that you should show up to at our next meeting. And VHP will be able to answer all those questions much more appropriately and in-depth. Alright. Ah, yes.
We're making it fifty percent of the amount.
Alright, I would move to request the treasurer to issue and withdraw, I would move to request the treasurer to withdraw and issue a check from the impact fees for the amount of $2,662.50 for the deposit on the new telephone system for the police department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, that moves us on to signing of documents, which was manifest and similar, which is normal at first payroll.
Yeah, we have, I have a manifest for the ARCA funds, which you voted on at your last meeting. I have the manifest for the most current manifest and then I have the payroll manifest.
Yep, and I have noted some of the slightly more expensive items in there are portions of health insurance and the Capital Area Fire Compact. Fortunately, we do not have things like school payment in this particular one to drive it up further. Alright. And I believe that covers everything on our agenda.
Yes, I would like a non-public session.
Okay, so there is a non-public request. Before we go into that, are there any other public comments or questions? Alright, seeing none, what is the nature of the non-public?
I'd like to request a non-public session for Personnel under RSA 91A:32A.
Alright, so I would move that we enter non-public session at seven fifty-six.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, as a note to anybody that's watching and streaming and of course, everybody leaving, we will return immediately following the non-public session. So there will not be a resumption of the meeting at that time. Thank you.